Welcome to the Village of Westmont Board Budget Workshop for May 23, 2011.
Miraan is absent tonight. The clerks here. Mayor Pro Tim Scott.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief, or Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunter.
Here.
Deputy Clerk and Collector Kamak.
Here.
Police Administrative Assistant Rice.
Here.
Human Resource Administrator Casey.
Can we stand for the pledge, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to be doing the budget review. Manager Cyril, would you like to start it off, please?
Sure. What we hope to get through tonight is, I'm going to turn it over here very quickly to our Acting Finance Director Spencer Parker, who is going to explain some of the handed-out sheets and where they go in the budget binder. Then I thought we could talk about a couple of options for the budget that the staff has come up with to consider since the last discussion. And then I have passed out a copy of a budget reconciliation report and would like to get some feedback from the board members on that. As you remember or recall, this was something that Trustee Emery had asked for us to try to put together. I did send her a copy today, and she did write back and said that it is what she's looking for. So we'd be happy to hear what other board members have to think about that. And then, at the end, since you've had some time to look at the budget binder and the detail, we can just kind of open it up for questions and comments from the board members. And of course, we've got staff members here to ask, answer any specific questions. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Spencer.
All right. I think we'll probably start out by putting in the inserts, kind of like we did the prior time. So this packet is the insert, the one that has the binder clip at the top. And just like the last time, they have sticky notes that tell us which tab they go in. So the first one, which says Tab 1, goes in Tab 1. It's underneath the first red page. It says Some Recent Overviews at the very back of that. So right before the preliminary cuts and considerations, you'll see there's one currently in the budget that says Permanent Transfers Budget. The one with the sticky note replaces that one. The second one is under Tab 3, IT, which is, I believe, the third orange paper in. Underneath there, you've got your chart and graph, then your variance report, and then after that is the MSI detail. And you can take out the old MSI detail for IT and put in the new It's right before Economic Development, before Administration. And then the next section goes underneath Finance, which is the very last section in Tab 3. So you can go to Tab 4 and just take out the last couple of pages. It's right before Tab 4. All right. The next one is, the next one is under Tab 5. The first paperclip section is Police Administration, which goes about, again, right after the chart and after the budget variance report, comes the detail. You pull out the detail, and the new detail. And then the same thing again with Police Patrol, which comes right after Police Administration. Okay. The next one is under Convention Tourism. So under Tab 8, there's a couple of things in Tab 8. So the first one goes in, under the tab that says Convention Tourism. There should be a detail sheet which will come out. This new one will go in. And then, under the next tab of Westmont Center, the, I believe, should be the first sheet, the one that lists the revenues, will come out. This new one will go in. You will leave in the Westmont Center expenses that are already in the budget. So those can stay in, but the revenue one will go out. And I'm not sure if the expenses or the revenue comes first. Generally, the revenue comes first, but in mine, it looks like it's the other way around. So it should say either expenses or revenue on it. Leaving the expenses, add in the new revenue. And then we have, under Tab 11, Capital Projects, and should be replacing the first four pages, all the way until you get to the amortization schedule. So we'll leave in the amortization schedule and replace the pages that come right before it. Tab 11 should be up the first four pages. And then in Tab 12, we will leave in the internal do-to-do-from page, but then after that, the rest of the items in the Water Department can come out, and the paperclip section can go in. Fund 12. Tab 12.
So everything comes out in this file?
Yes. Under Tab 12, everything goes out except for the first chart that shows the do-to-do-from. Yep. So that is everything to insert in the binder. And we have that recycling bin over there. We can try pass anything that doesn't have notes, anything that we want to get rid of, we can just put in recycling bin. Pass it down. And then, as, just sort of a brief overview, so you guys are aware of what changes we just put in the binder. We had, in IT, there were a couple of phone items that got added in for dispatch stuff, including information we found out, you know, maybe three or four hours ago. So it's very up to date. We just got the last information on that in IT. The Finance got adjusted, now that we have a new temporary accountant at a slightly lower rate. So we lowered the budget projections for that. And then, in Police, there was an amount that was coded to uniforms in Patrol, and it's actually going to be used, this money's actually going to be used for a grant. So the grants are listed in Police Administration. So of course, we had to replace both of those departments. So all it did was it moved money out of uniforms into a grant account and increased the revenue. So that change was revenue-neutral. Then the changes we had in the Capital Projects were just the change that we had discussed last time, the board's direction, how we cut the amount for the firearms range replacement, just leaving in, you know, half the amount, sort of as a placeholder. And then, the Convention Tourism adjustment included the removal of the retail rental subsidy that we had discussed at the last meeting, as well as the removal of the anticipated funding from the marker lease, since that did not get approved. And I believe those were all the different sheets we inserted. And that is sort of those changes. Okay. So the next section, I guess, is sort of, kind of what we wanted to discuss, sort of with some different options. And this one that has the paperclip on it has lots of different options. And you will notice, as Ginny pointed out to me, that not all of them have holes punched, and that is intentional. It wasn't just a mistake on our part. So the first two that have holes punched will be the ones that you can insert in your binder after we're done with this initial discussion of looking through some different options. The ones with the holes punched that look like the regular sheets are the ones that are accurate, up to date with what is reflected in your binder. This is the summary that will go in your binder after we're done with the discussion and looking at the different scenarios.
Spencer, could I interrupt for a quick second?
Yep.
Just to kind of give some foundational background, a number of board members have asked, and we're all concerned, you know, what's going to happen at the state with the local government distributed fund. Some of the pundits last week thought that maybe by today even, we would know what was going to happen. But it does not look like, at this point, that we will know until probably the very last day of the session, which will be the 31st. So it could go all the way to the 12th hour. A lot of people that I've talked to in the last week or so that have been down in Springfield or in contact with their legislators seem to be more encouraged than maybe they were a few weeks ago, that there's a chance that they may just leave our LGDF alone. But there's also a chance that they won't. And I know Fred, you talked with IML staff today, and one idea was, I think, a possibility of about a 5% reduction, when I did the numbers. And just to put that in perspective, for us, that's about $140,000. But before Spencer goes and explains the different options that are on these summary sheets, what I wanted to explain is, based on the concern about the state, we tried to look at some significant alternatives to try to offset that revenue loss. One of the ideas that we came up with was to suspend the vehicle replacement program for a year. And the idea would be to take that revenue that would normally be going into that fund and redirect it somewhere else. One of the options, and Spencer will explain it, is, you know, to put all that in the Emergency Reserve Fund. But we can do other things with that. We talked about the need to pay back the Water Fund, so maybe a portion could be paid back this year towards that. The other part of that, of course, is suspending the purchases for this year. And in talking with our Public Works staff that service the fleet, we've made such a significant investment in the fleet over the last few years that we think we can probably get away with that for one year. I wouldn't recommend doing it beyond that, but given the possibility of the significant, you know, action by the state, I think it's probably a good thing to consider. So I just want to give that kind of explanation as a backdrop. It kind of relates to the LGDF. And Spencer, if you want to then, go ahead and explain the sheets that you passed out.
Sure. So we've presented three different scenarios here, and each scenario has two sheets that you'll be familiar with. So the first sheet is the portrait one, the one that's sort of vertical. And the second sheet for each scenario is the landscape one. Now, the first sheet, the vertical one, is the fund summary sheet. We've all seen before, and it goes through and lists every department and the fund. It shows the revenues and the expenses and the projected net. Now, the second sheet, the sort of landscape one, just does it just by fund. It doesn't show all the individual departments. And it shows the estimated cash balance, revenues, expenses, which is, gives you the net or the change in cash balance, and then the projected amounts. So these are the sheets that you've seen before, but we'll look at a couple of different scenarios. So the next sheet that's in your packet is a chart that shows the vehicle replacement program. And this is looking at sort of the option that Ron had mentioned about postponing purchases and then moving some revenue from the vehicle replacement program into the reserves or somewhere else. And so this chart shows kind of what we would expect would happen if we were to move some of that revenue. The blue line at the top, option number one, shows what it would be if we were to have as much revenue in there as we would generally figure. This is what we need to fund the future projects. The red one shows what it is right now with, right now, we're taking about $215,000 to go into capital projects to cover up, shore up some of the losses that we talked about last time. So that's the red line. The green line shows the other option that we are currently, you know, looking at and considering, which would be to reduce the revenue this year of $450,000 and move it somewhere else, like Ron talked about, likely to reserves or somewhere else. You can see there, as we get to the end of 2023, now by 2023, all the vehicles will be replaced, will have been replaced, all the ones that we have have been replaced at least once. So it's a good place to kind of say, okay, this is what our balance will be. And you can see, the green line is down to about $282,000, which is kind of low, and I wouldn't recommend going any lower than that. But, I mean, I think that looks doable. Obviously, it's all based on assumptions, and who knows how assumptions will play out. But our best guess is that we'll be okay with pulling up to $450,000 out of revenues this year. So the second, the next two documents look very similar to the first two, only they are red. So they've got red at the top, and the funds down at the bottom are red. And we did red because it starts with R, just like reserves and the vehicle replacement program. So the red is what we would get if we were to take that revenue out of the vehicle replacement program and put it into the reserves. So you will notice, if you compare the two landscape pages, on the yellow one, the projected cash balance at the very bottom, 824, 552, the same one with the red, with the vehicle replacement, because we're just shifting it from one fund to another. So you will notice there that number 68, the Emergency Reserve Fund, on the red is the 1047, and on the yellow, it shouldn't be the 1047. It should, it would remain the 595, 895, that's over on the left-hand side. I don't know how that stays the same, but it should not. So it was an error. I apologize. So the Emergency Reserve Fund, so that, the red is basically taking it out of the vehicle replacement program, putting it into the Emergency Reserve Fund, which would push that up to right about $1 million in the Emergency Reserve Fund. The next section, the next two pages, the green ones, show something different. At a prior meeting, Trustee Emery had asked the question about using the local gasoline tax to fund more of the road construction type of projects, or the things that we'd find more of in capital projects. So this green sheet is the gas, dealing with the gas tax. And this would be if we were to remove the gas tax out of the general fund and put it into the Capital Projects Fund. So now, it just so happens that the gas tax is also $450,000, so it kind of balances out. Nice. It's kind of nice that it's the same number. So you'll notice here, the capital projects on both the yellow and the red are sitting at, if we don't move anything in there, its projected balance at the end of the year is about $2,450. If we do take the gasoline tax and move it in, then its projected cash balance changes to $452,450. Of course, the offset, then, is in the general fund, because right now, the gas tax is going in the general fund. So you will notice, on the vertical sheet, on the green sheet, we've got the general fund. Its projected net would be a negative $379,000. So that is, that's the other option, is if we move it out of the general fund, we could certainly do that, but then we're looking at a deficit in the general fund.
I mean, the end result is the same. It's just a matter of where you show it.
Absolutely. Yep.
I mean, at the end of the day.
Yes.
Now, if it takes more staff time to make these changes, then it doesn't make sense to do it. Because at the end of the day, it's the same.
Right. It's just moving money around. Where you want to put it.
Well, except it does set the stage for maybe next year, in terms of what you're going to go forward in that particular fund, use it for.
Right.
In terms of the balances.
Taking money out of our left front pocket.
And putting it in the other pocket.
Right.
Right.
That's fine. But what about repaying the Water Fund?
Well, that was the part of the question. We could take a portion of this revenue and pay back towards the Water Fund, if that's the board's desire.
We've got to get a portion of that 2005 number knocked down and put back in where it belongs.
Okay.
And if we've got to bite the bullet to do it, then that's what we have to do. The funds have to go back into that account. They've been out of it way too long.
If that's what the board would like to do, we can, for the next budget meeting, have a proposal on how much and how long we anticipate it'll take to pay back.
Yeah. That would be good.
Sounds good.
Definitely look at it.
So for the next meeting, do you want, I mean, we'll show the idea with the water loan. So are we then going to show, for the next budget meeting, do we want to show the vehicle replacement program postponed and the revenues directed elsewhere? Is that general consensus?
Well, I think that's what we're saying, right?
Mm-hmm. I think that was the recommendation for one year.
The idea of the suspension of the VRP, no purchases, and then we'll come up with a proposal, how much of that will go to the Water Fund. Maybe the balance then will go into the Emergency Reserve?
Case we need it, yeah.
That would be the only place that I could see to put it at this point in time.
Okay.
Part to pay back the Water Fund and part to bolster the Emergency Reserve Fund. I mean, right now, I think that's the only two options that we really have.
I think that's the safest options.
I mean, right now, that's, I think, the safest way to go with it. Most conservative.
Yeah, right.
And it gives you flexibility, because you can always go into that Emergency Reserve if you have to.
Right.
Okay. And then, the gas tax, we want to do that for illustrative purposes. I don't think anybody, I know we're not real excited about the idea of moving.
To me, it doesn't make sense to do it, but...
I don't get the benefit. Why do it?
It's just looking at it in a different way, I guess.
So a waste of time, kind of?
Why would it be a waste of time?
Well, why are we switching it? What's the benefit to move it?
Well, the benefit is to move funds into the capital fund project. It's the purpose of it.
It's sort of a question of, what do you want to use this money to fund? Do you want it to be used to fund road kinds of projects, or do you want it to be used to fund the general operating work of the village, the payroll, the regular supplies that we need, those sort of things? So...
The question, the question is whether or not we want to do infrastructure work, which needs to be done, or do we want to put it in the general fund?
I mean, if the board is so inclined, you can take money from the general fund and move it.
It's just, it's just a pay, it's just a line exchange. I mean, in one scenario, you show your general fund in the arrears or in the red, and in the other scenario, it's more balanced, but you can still, you can still, I mean, it's, it really...
No, 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 no. The gas tax is going back into...
Well, that's what I was going to say. I thought philosophically, I thought it would be a change in the philosophy to say, going forward, this tax will now go into the Capital Projects Fund, as opposed to, I mean, it wouldn't transfer to get next year.
That was, that was basically, that was basically what I thought was on it.
Yeah. At the end of the day, it's all going to come out the same, so I don't think it matters where it is.
But the problem is, but the problem is, if it goes into this budget under the general fund, then it's then not earmarked for the capital projects. Okay? So let's say we get into this thing, and we need $400,000 in the capital project, but yet that $400,000 is over here. Yeah, I grant, a line for a line, but it's not a line for a line. It's a budget item. So if you're budgeting for your capital projects, and you want to put $400,000 into the capital fund for that, then, or even split the difference in the two. Take half of it, put it in the general fund. Take half of it and put it in the other.
Either way, it's fine with me, because it doesn't make any real difference. I mean...
Yeah, it does. It does. Because if you put it all in the general fund, then it gets used for all those other items. So let's say you get to the point where you need part of that money for capital fund projects. Okay, so it's been used up over here, and now you can't put it over here.
Right. But then you have to understand, you're going to cause your general fund, if I understood you correctly, and if I read this paper right, we're going to be a big minus in the general fund, which we need to make, we need that for our day-to-day operation. Do we really want to put ourselves in a position where we could have an issue for a day-to-day? I mean...
We're going to have an issue anyway. It doesn't matter.
Well, no. No, not if you're balanced. You don't.
We're going to have an issue before it's...
We're going to draw down the, it'll result in drawing down the cash balance.
We'd have to take it out of the cash balance. To me, it's just a line change. I don't, we could do it however you guys want. I'm fine with either one.
And then I think the next question is, if it does move into the general fund, or into the capital fund, what do we do with that negative in the general fund? Is that something that we're comfortable with, with leaving the negative in the general fund, or does that mean we want to go make some additional changes to get that to a balanced?
And we can work on some options for the next budget meeting, if that's the direction of the board.
I think if you're going to be fiscally sound, you need to, you need to balance, if nothing else, your general fund, for goodness sake. I mean, that's...
That would certainly be my recommendation.
Agree.
Especially on an ongoing basis. I mean, you don't want to plan to be spending more than you may.
You don't want to go into a planning to be in arrears.
Right.
You know?
The state can do that.
Yeah. We're not the state.
Yeah, we're not the state. Well, we're in the state, unfortunately. But I think we should break away and be our own state, State of DuPage.
So where would that put us in the capital funds, then, if we don't do anything with that one? Where's that put us?
Our, we're planning to spend pretty much everything we have in there. It's pretty much going to be empty, and we have our typical amount that comes in each year, which is right about, it looks like right around a million.
Okay.
Each year. So, I mean, it's right about a million that'd be coming in each year, and that's pretty much what we'd have to spend that year.
Now, if we suspend the vehicle replacement program for a year, then those funds go into the general fund. That's the way I'm understanding this thing is going right now. If we took the vehicle replacement funds and, but I mean, the thing is, I prefer to see it go in the reserve fund, then a dollar amount that you're talking about in the motor fuel, you put in the general fund, why couldn't you take part of that and put that also into the reserve fund?
Well, you could, but you just said you want it in capital. We can't have it everywhere.
No. I'm just, I'm trying to come to an agreement here on, because of what people are saying with the motor fuel tax funds, okay? I'm just trying to find a way to bolster that reserve fund any way we can.
I think if you just kind of give us the general direction, this is where you, this is what you want to do with the VRP. We understand that. This is, you know, where part of it's going to go to water, part of it's going to go possibly to Emergency Reserve. And you also want us to come back with some options to try to reduce that deficit in the general fund. I think we can have something ready for you to look at on the June 1 meeting. I think there's a couple of other things that, you know, we can consider.
I mean, with that amount of money in the motor fuel, I think it could still be used and moved in the other side of the ledger to help adjust some other things also, couldn't it? Not only general fund, but several other items in there.
Right.
So...
So why don't you do that then?
Okay. We will work on that.
Let's take a look at it.
With some options.
So not the whole thing going to capital, look at it more like distributing it differently?
Right. We'll come up and give you a couple of different ways to do it.
Yeah, I don't think it makes sense to do it all in capital.
Okay. I think that's the direction we were looking for. So I think we've got the answers to our questions on that handout. And you can put the ones with holes on them into your binder if you'd like to. That's where we currently are. I have one under summaries.
Can I just go circle back and ask you a question about the chart for the vehicle replacement program?
Sure.
And you've got your note that you're assuming a 3% inflation for vehicle cost and supplemental sales tax contribution?
Mm-hmm.
So how did you come up with those numbers? Why 3%? And we don't really know what's happening with the contribution.
Right. So the 3% is just sort of the number that we've kind of used as a basis for inflation, like for the vehicle replacement, kind of from the get-go. So we're assuming the costs are going to go up about 3%, which would then mean if each year our contribution is based on the cost of the vehicles, that contribution amount would probably be going up close to 3%...
Okay.
As the costs of the vehicles go up.
Okay, and for the supplemental sales tax, we're assuming...
Right. So we're assuming that, you know, we continue to fund it with supplemental sales tax or any other sort of contribution from...
Okay.
Any revenues, assuming the...
But you know where I'm going.
The question is, what sort of inflationary factor do we use?
Yeah, yeah.
For the projection of the supplemental sales tax? Is it static or...
We haven't really looked at for the next, you know, 20... For the next 10 years, we haven't looked at supplemental sales tax overall because a portion of it is already going to the police pension, a portion of it's going to the general fund.
Right.
This 3% increase is just assuming that we continue to fund the program based on the cost of the vehicles.
Okay.
So it's just sort of a 3% inflationary cost of the vehicles.
Okay.
Right.
Great, thank you.
So I think the next item is just... Is this item?
Just, yeah, some feedback on the budget reconciliation report. I'll just go over this real quickly, just kind of give you a overview. What we've tried to put together here is on the left-hand side, of course, are your different budget line items by account number. And then we provide the budgeted detail for the 2010, 2011 fiscal year. And then the next column to the right is what I've called the budget expense detail. So that's what showed up in the budget for '10, '11 in terms of what we anticipate we're going to spend for each of those detailed items. And then to the right of that is the actual expense for that fiscal year. And then to the right of that is the... A column that I've added where we had expenses, actual expenses that came up that were not detailed in the budget itself. So you can see some detail in that column. And then you look across, and that row is actually blank under the farthest column to the left. And then finally, to the right, you have what is proposed currently in the budget, the detail, so that you can compare that against what was budgeted the prior year and what was actually expended in that prior year. And I believe that's what Trustee Emery was asking for when she was talking about reconciliation. There is more detail to this spreadsheet, but for purposes of trying to give the board a report that, you know, we thought was answering the questions that were being asked, these are the columns that we are including.
Ron, how labor-intensive would this be to do, say, quarterly?
Quarterly?
I mean, I don't know that it's something...
Well, first of all, this is looking at it on an annual basis. So if you get it quarterly, are you talking about like a project... Not a projected, but...
So you're getting like a running total of how things are?
Yeah, I guess...
We have budget expense reports that come right off the system that will show you exactly what's been purchased. But what this does is it shows you in a very simplistic fashion for the whole fiscal year what was spent and whether or not we actually spent it for detail that we had in the budget document itself. That you won't... You won't see the budget document detail in the budget expense reports.
Okay.
We don't have that capability to print that out. What we've been able to do, working with Spencer, is we can take the data, and correct me if I don't describe this accurately, but we take the data out of the MSI system, the financial software system, we dump it into a spreadsheet. And then Spencer does his little thing with pivot tables, and we can then give the data to the departments. And they haven't worked on this yet, so I'm going to go out on a limb and say I think it's relatively okay from a labor standpoint to do. I've done this myself with this particular one. And there is a little bit of extra time that has to be spent to just to take some of the vendors and make sure you've got them in the right detail. But I didn't find it that difficult.
Okay.
And I think it could be done. To me, I would look at it as any other type of report we might be asked to do. Obviously, the bigger departments that have more budget divisions, you know, it's going to take a little more time. But I think this report that finance can generate will save a lot of time for them.
Okay. I mean, I... You see similar reports every finance meeting. I guess at the end of the day, if... I kind of think, you know, if the fire department has a $100 budget, and they have $70 in there for widgets, and $30 in there for plugs, and they spend $40 on plugs, and only $60 on widgets, they're still within budget, so I really don't care. And then it's their job, as they're planning their next year's budget. I almost feel like leave the budgeting to them unless there's some blatant misuse or... You know, and then again, that would be the department head's responsibility to see that and to address it. So I just don't want to get to the point where we're micromanaging every single line when we have professionals already doing that. If it's going to add staff time, if it's not staff time, then yeah, have had it, we'll all look at it.
I think Trustee Emery's, I guess, idea here is to see if, you know, if there's anything else to trim. And quite frankly, the budget is pretty good for $701,790, and actual expenses, you know, $25,000 less than that. That amount of money, that's pretty close. So I think the whole idea that her idea was behind this is, well, let's look at this year's and see how much more was overbudgeted. If we can trim, you know, $20,000 here in all these different areas, then let's do it.
Yeah, or like if we're really going over in one area or not...
Yeah, but I mean, I'm scanning through this, and I don't really see that many red flags. It's all a few dollars here.
It's just kind of a sampling.
This is only the legislation portion of the budget.
This is only one section.
But even still, I mean, that's pretty close. I mean, I...
I do have a question, though.
It's great.
What is volunteer coverage? $527. What is that?
That is a policy that Irma offers. It's one of the additional programs that they offer for any of the volunteers that do anything for the village. It's like a medical reimbursement policy.
And what volunteers do we have doing things for the village?
Pardon?
EMA?
Or EMA people, for example.
Wouldn't they be covered under policy?
Well, there is some coverage under workers' comp for that.
Does this cover anything like the volunteers for taste and red, white, and blue and all the rest of them?
It covers the volunteers for the taste. If we had a, you know, a volunteer, I suppose, intern, it might... It would cover that as well. But it's a special coverage that they've offered for a number of years, primarily for municipalities that have special events so that you can provide some kind of medical...
Citizens Police Academy?
Sure.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, the spike in the phone charges? What is that all about?
Spike in what charge?
Telephone.
Oh, the actual expense versus the detail?
Yeah.
I'm not prepared to answer that tonight. This is an illustration of the report, but, you know, we can get those kind of answers.
I mean, granted, it's $1,000, but it's like, okay...
Right.
You go $1,000 over what's budgeted in phone expenses.
Yeah.
That's not...
Well, and that's where... You know, that's probably a perfect example of where, you know, that department head would be looking at that and saying, why? You know, is it justified? Is it not justified? Do we adjust it for our next budget year? At the end of the day, we're still okay, but that's a red flag that we want to look at. And I think that's their job, not ours, but...
Okay, so, but nobody to this point in time...
And I'm sure there's an explanation.
In this case, because...
But nobody to this point in time...
Yeah.
In the original budget document here that we have, I don't see any explanation as to why it's $1,000 more than what it was.
We probably wouldn't.
Well, that's maybe why it's a good idea to see this at the end of the year.
At the end of the year, just to kind of look at it.
Yeah, you would actually see that in the current budget document because of the heading. I mean, this isn't that level of detail. The telephone charges is pretty general.
I agree with you. So I don't want to micromanage this whole thing, but I like to see it at the end of the year.
Right.
Where everything's at.
Right.
You know, then we'll know how close they were.
Because maybe we do need to...
Because if it's $25,000 just for this one, that shows that the legislative is doing a good job.
Right.
Yeah, and it's like, at the end of the day, they're fine, so...
I understand the philosophy behind, you know, what Trustee Emery is trying to look at. And I think this can be done without a huge amount of extra work based on, you know, the way we can put this together in the spreadsheets. I, you know, honestly, at this point, I'm kind of interested in seeing it.
And just kind of look at it and...
And see how well we've been on target. You know, at kind of a little bit more detail than we would typically look at it in the budget process.
Well, I guess we won't know until you guys...
You know what I mean? And I think it's a case...
Until they do it.
It's a case if there is something there, then it's where it's going to show up more so than what you have.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to show what was budgeted, what actually was used, and then what you're coming after again in the following year. I mean...
Frankly, a lot of this, I suspect the departments probably have this kind of detail...
Right.
Because they use it when they prepare their budget for the next year.
That's their working document.
But I think we'll make it easier for them by giving them this report. I don't know how they individually keep their own records. But we'll be able to run this off the MSI and do it by vendor, and then they can, you know, it'll be in a spreadsheet, and it's very easy to do the...
So then it would help cut down on the staff time if they have to go digging through everything. It'd give them a little bit better, quicker overview of what they're dealing with.
Yeah, if we couldn't do it that way, I don't know if I would recommend that we do it, because it would be a lot of extra staff time.
Are there any department heads here that think it would help them?
I think what you're... Only speaking for myself, what you're describing and asking is what we already do to prepare the budget in the first place before it's ever turned in.
Yeah, it is. It's almost like a raw budget.
You're just describing the budget process. So we go and look and see what we spent, what, you know, went over, went over, adjust those numbers, and then propose that as a new one, and then that gets turned in, and then it's still too high, and then they, you know, the... We start at Thanksgiving, you know, and turn that in by, you know, about Christmas. So in January, that's when we're looking for, you know, how can this be scaled back? And then what are the ramifications? So every, you know, it's already done in some form. It's just that it's got to be put in a format. Every department does it differently, and then the trick is getting it all to match one format for... So it all looks the same to you.
So this would be more for us than you?
Well, right, it is for you. I mean, per your request.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Why don't you put a dollar amount on it rather than look at minutia and start looking at some really big items? You know, like say, over $10,000, we have something concerned about this, or 50,000, or 75,000, or 100,000, rather than look at the nickel dime stuff?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd kind of like to speak on behalf of the department heads. I know in difficult financial times like this, it's unsettling to elected officials to see miscellaneous here and then miscellaneous there. But when you look at it in terms of, you know, it's easy to call it a slush fund or something. I prefer the term discretionary revenue. And, you know, for example, in the economic development department, we're talking about a department that's got a budget of $700,000. So if we've got $400,000 or $500,000 worth of discretionary revenue or, you know, that we can... For unforeseen emergencies, for minor things that come up in the normal course of business, we do appreciate the board's confidence in us to say that we'll administer that $400,000 judiciously and not spend it unwisely. But we do need to have a little bit of a leeway there, you know, and, you know, police and public works and fire are certainly infinitely larger budgets. So the amount of discretionary...
Here they come.
... is certainly a little bit more than what our department...
To add to that, I mean, similarly, throughout the course of the year, you'll have someone that might come in under open forum and have something that they want looked into, and you want to help them. So nobody ever wants the answer to be, is like, I'm sorry, we didn't budget for that. We'll look into it next year. You know, so those are where the miscellaneous type things come in.
And that's another point, too.
We don't spend it if there's no...
Well, and there's always the unknown. I mean, something could always come up.
It could be a constituent that comes directly to an elected official and pleads for help, and you say, no, no, don't have any money for it. Well, but if we've got a little bit of a reserve or discretionary fund, maybe we can figure out a way to squeeze it in and be of good service to a taxpayer.
Yes, Chief.
I would say, we do our monthly, I'll have an accounting each month where we're over budget, anything we are over budget, anything we're getting close to. I mean, we do a monthly review on that, and we have maybe two areas. Most of them are personal radio room or everything else. We did okay, but I monitor it each month, something that's getting close, how much we try to figure out where we're at. The other thing is what you'll see in us, you talk to miscellaneous funds, we, in our budget this year, we broke a lot of things that we can identify out out of the miscellaneous funds that we purchased in the fast training classes, conferences, and made it a line item this year. So now you'll see some there, a new line item, well, why are we doing this now? We've always done it, we just take it out of miscellaneous funds.
Just making more detail.
Yes, it's a catch-all area where allows us a little bit of leeway, that if something comes up that we didn't anticipate earlier in the year, well, jeez, I'd like to send someone to this school, but I really can't because I didn't budget for it, and I have[1590.37] can't because I didn't budget for it and I have no funds for this training, so now I can't send them to a school, or I can't buy this piece of equipment because it's broken. We didn't know it was going to break. It allows us a little bit of an area to manage our budgets more efficiently and be able to allow us and keep us operating in the top condition.
You can't manage a, a community with such a tight restraints when you're down to nickels and cents, like chief brought up, you have to have the discretionary in it.
I agree.
Has have done a good job in, I think this is, at least from my end of it, on a yearly basis.
Yeah.
Would be sufficient for me now. The other trustees may not think that way, but at least with...
No, I'm, I'm inclined to agree.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's why we have the department heads we have, and that's why we have the finance department, and, you know, that's their job.
The only thing that's changing is the format. They're, you know, we're going to consolidate the format, so each department puts it in this fashion.
Yeah, once a year.
They all have it in their own fashion, it's just...
Once a year, the end of the year, and it's more just informational, of course.
I mean, I'm even comfortable with them presenting it in their fashion, so it doesn't take them any more time.
Yeah, I don't care if we see five different ones.
We're not splitting atoms, it's just looking at, I mean, we're just looking at their numbers. If they do it in a certain way, they're comfortable with that, you know, why, you know, let's, let's have them present it, rather than doing it in a consolidated fashion, yeah.
Trustee Fleming?
Well, I'm fine with once a year. I don't have a problem with once a year.
Once a year is good, though.
But I still, I, I just think that you need that once-a-year reconciliation, just as an overview. I'm not saying every month or quarterly or whatever, once a year.
Okay.
Go, baby.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
At this point, just general budget comments, questions, if there's any specific things that trustees have looked at that they want us to either respond to or look at further for the next meeting, which will be June fir- first.
Chief Mulhern?
Have we looked at the local ordinances or any other ordinances for, we can use for this adjudicator that we have instead of going through the county?
Yes, Sergeant Brunza, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Brunza. I'll pay for that.
He'll be mad at you now.
That's not...
We've talked about this, we made presentations to several Public Safety Committee meetings. We're looking into our officers in doing in traffic enforcement or ordinance enforcement through local ordinances. You would write someone for a traffic ticket. Right now, if you stop someone for speeding 12, 13 miles over the limit, they go through court supervision, they're going to pay a $125 fine. If they go to court, you're probably going to be paying over $200 in fines and fees. We feel that a lot of those fees and all the money's going outside of the village. If we switch over to this local ordinance base or their adjudicator-based program, all the fees would stay inside, and also the fees would be lowered. You know, write someone a speeding ticket, $75, write someone with a one headlights ticket. A lot of time, the officers may want to give a verbal warning to someone for a 75, you know, because they don't want to have someone pay $125 for a headlight out, or a 50 or a $75, whatever fee is made is a little bit more reasonable in, in this economy, more understanding. So he's looking at that, now he's, did a site visit to Elmhurst Police Department, which has a program up and running, and he's looking into it. We, we feel comfortable that probably by the end of this year, we should have a program in place, using our current adjudicator for administrative toes, as well as our red light cameras for this program as well. That's figured into the budget. When you look at our budget for the adjudicator, we added a little bit of extra money in there that the system's going to be up and running soon.
I think the village manager has some firsthand knowledge on the cost of speeding tickets that he might want to...
Oh, something you'd like to share?
Maybe it's another village manager you were talking about.
Something that I'd like to share at all. It wasn't a local.
Well, yes, we are looking into it. I will give a status update for you, but this is something that he is exploring.
Can you tell me how the impoundings program's going?
Yeah, in our mind, it's outstanding. I believe we were averaging around 20 cars a year, or 20, 20 cars a month, some would peak up to 30, 35.
About 180 last, last year.
Last year, we made, we bought in close to $180,000 in revenue to the village with this program.
You know, this, this really doesn't even relate to budget, but I'm, now that trustee Scott brought it up, I'm kind of curious. I know that we have impounded cars that sometimes we have for a year, two years, three years. Where are we storing those?
Water department, under the, the graciousness of Director May has allowed us to store the vehicles there.
You're making up a choice.
I mean, and, and what do we do with them? I mean, do we maintain them anyway? Do we start them up and run them?
There's...
What point can we sell them? Can we keep them? Can we give them back? All of the above.
Okay. Short answer, CSO Reinhardt runs the vehicles once a month. He takes the battery pack, goes out, and each vehicle is run and started up every month. They get it running condition. They'll move them a little bit, too, for the tires. We're at the mercy of the courts. When we seize a vehicle, whether it be for a drug seizure or for a felony DUI seizure, we will petition the court, the DuPage County Circuit Court, to have that vehicle returned to us. The process is the owner can offer to buy the vehicle back, and where we get fees, and get a little bit of revenue that way, or the judge can decide, no, the vehicle's going to go to the police department and award the vehicle to us. We can determine if we want to use the vehicle for law enforcement or village purposes first, and we've done that with some of the vehicles, I believe with some pickup trucks and other vehicles. Or we can then choose, once we get ownership of the vehicle, to sell them at auction. And I believe you'll see for this coming, DuPage Mayor's or Mayor's Auction coming up in June, we have some seized vehicles that are going out for sale. So it's not a quick process. A vehicle seizure process could take anywhere between six months to maybe two, two years, depending on the court, depending on the negotiations in the court, depending if the person wants the car back or not, also depending on the value and the cost of the vehicle.
Who covers insurance costs? I mean, because those vehicles have to be insured, don't they?
They probably would come under our insurance, would probably be under Irma. We would have to pick up the deductible a little after that. We are responsible for those vehicles. While it's in our custody, we are responsible.
So if...
That's why we go out there and we move them once a month, and that's why we start them up.
So if we do that and we, you know, hit another car...
We would, through Irma file a claim and be responsible for it.
I was just curious. It was interesting to me.
So that means you have to stay on Director May's good side then?
Uh, yes, whatever Director May likes, he gets, especially when it comes to cars. It's, it's been an age-old problem. When we started the seizure vehicle problem, we didn't have someplace to store the cars. We cannot store them down at 55th and Womack because it's, it's a working yard, there's no room. We did not seize cars. We didn't try to seize cars because we had no place to store. We worked out some areas there, we move them around, depending on the weather, we put them in front of the salt bin in the summer.
They have to be secured.
Um, at the, you know, at night or during the winter time, we make sure the salt bins are clear, so we move them around, and now we're able to seize more cars. And the purpose for the seizure of the cars is not only a revenue generator, but it's mainly the main purpose is to dissuade someone from driving a vehicle. If it's involved in a drug arrest, it's, you know, it's an additional punishment, it's also to prevent another drug offense from occurring in town. Your felony DUIs and your felony driving while license revoked, you, well, the person, obviously, this is his third or fourth time, he's arrested for DUI, arrested for driving while license revoked, he's not getting the message, take the car away from him and he can't drive. And that's the ultimate goal, is to make our streets safer.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
That works for me.
Sounds good.
Any other questions from trustees on the budget?
So far, no.
Any questions from the audience?
Keep the pressure on the state.
Yeah, keep the pressure on the state, yeah. Write letters, call your state rep, whatever you can do.
That is true. It's, that's the best advice you can...
Have you talked to our rep or senator?
We have. I know Fred just corresponded with Senator Dillard, but we've been down there, we've talked with him. Our local people, I think, are all on board with us. It's not a question of that. But they're hearing it from all across the state. The mayors have done a great job across the state of getting that message out, and from what we're hearing is it, it seems like it's making a difference. But until that final, you know, toll on the clock, can't say for sure that nothing's going to happen at this point.
Okay. Thank you. There's nothing else to come before the board. I haven't heard anything for an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Roll call?
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
It was a land speed record.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Land speed record for a budget meeting.